All right, as, uh, as, uh, pointed out by Commissioner.
No kidding.
Charles Miles, it is one thirty. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Order of Rockdale Planning and Zoning Meeting of Tuesday, March the fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chair Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Ratliff.
Here.
Commissioner Miles.
Present.
Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Commissioner Houston.
Here.
Commissioner Slobodan.
Here.
We have a, um, quorum, so we'll go ahead and start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Imocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this glorious day that you've given us. Lord, please continue to bless each of us and our families. Bless this meeting. Let the discussions that are had here be fruitful and in accordance with your will. Lord, we ask all of this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Citizens Communications, do we have any communications?
No, sir.
Uh, we're gonna have to swearing in Commissioner Bud Houston, and that'll be done by Shanna or?
I'll do it.
Shenna.
You can just stand right there and raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bud Houston.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute?
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my appointed office?
The deeds of my appointment.
Of the state, yeah, of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve and protect.
And defend? The Constitution and laws?
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard, Bud. Okay, receive a presentation from Chair Williams on the City Council meeting, the City Council meeting being held last February tenth. Concerning us, uh, there was considering taking any necessary action on a recommendation for the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a conditional use permit request submitted by Christopher Strickland and, uh, for some reason that was also moved down into action part of things, and we'll get to that in a minute. And then, uh, we, uh, considering taking any necessary action on replacements to the Planning and Zoning Commission for terms expiring to two thousand and twenty-five, and, uh, they heard, uh, our request for Bud. And then a bunch of it was appointments to, uh, parks boards and stuff. Uh, so we got down into the, uh, considered and take any necessary action on the second reading on that nine fifteen San Gabriel property. Um, there were issues that we brought up that the council didn't like either, and, um, regarding the one point five parking spaces. Ben, did you wanna give an overview on that right quick, or, or?
Sure, um, so the council approved both. You'll see there's two in the council meeting. There was nine hundred block and then nine fifteen. Both are owned by the Housing Authority. They approved it to a parking ratio of, I believe it was one point two five or one point five. One point five. Yeah, they actually specified that 'cause this was the final go at it, and so we've let the Housing Boardy, Housing Authority know. They had no issues with that. And so they're moving forward. We actually just gave them a letter that they will get services from us 'cause that's another requirement from the loans that they're applying for. And so they're still in the review process from those entities.
And that's both the nine fifteen and the nine hundred, or?
Yeah, there, there's just two separate rezon request 'cause it was two different zonings for two different properties.
And stay where you're at because, uh, the other thing that addressed was considering taking any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance for a rezon request for property located at eight one five Houston. And that was actually denied because the owner may be buying a house. Is that, or refresh my memory on that?
It, it was denied. It was specified by a council member close to the family that they were moving on elsewhere. And so that this was no longer needed, and so council took action to deny that, that.
That was the agricultural to, uh.
To M one.
Mm-hmm. And then, uh, really, that's all that was, uh, for us, I think, at that meeting.
Can I ask one question on the Housing Authority property? We did stipulate on that that it had to have curbing as well, correct?
That's right, and that went through. The only question was the ratio of parking.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Um, I did have one thing I wanted to address before we get into the meeting part of it. Uh, they were giving for thirty-five mile an hour winds and possible thunderstorms around the area. Is there a safe place designated in this building, City Hall?
I would say probably the safest place in the building, if there were a tornado, would be either the safe or this back hallway right back here.
I never, I never, never had a chance to dr- you know, ask that question before, but they were pretty sketchy earlier this morning on the weather, so now we know. Follow ten. All right. Action items. Number three, consider and take any necessary action on appointing a chair and vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, from the period March two thousand and twenty-five to February two thousand and twenty-six. Anybody want to be the chairman? Ben? Oh, oh. Anyone want to be the chairman?
Or make a motion for someone to be chair.
I make a motion to Doug Williams, remain chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Pretty quick, didn't it?
Like a railroad train. All right, anybody want to be the second?
I'll make a motion that Joan Ratliff remain vice chair.
Second.
My only issue is that we've got a property for sale, just so that y'all know. I don't mind doing it until that's finalized, but.
Until the property.
I'm glad I didn't have to make that announcement. I'm glad you. All right, so we have a motion on the books. The candidate agreed to it. We have a second. All those in favor, Joan, as the, uh, vice chair, raise your hand. Okay.
I don't think we did.
We didn't vote on Doug.
Uh, we don't, yeah, okay. I was hoping there was some legality in there somewheres, just.
That no one would say anything.
No one, yeah. All right, so the motion was for me to remain as, uh, as chairman and Joan as vice chairperson. So, all that, all right. Motion made, seconded, and carried on both positions. Um, were we supposed to do, uh, I've lost my train of thought. Were we supposed to do scheduling of time for meetings?
Yes, that is also part of that.
So, um.
Down a little bit further on that.
Yeah, let me, let me, I've never asked staff before. I've always asked, uh, commissioners, but I've never asked staff before. Is there a better time for staff to meet?
Doug, this is, this is later on in the agenda.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
If we'll keep it in order, if you don't mind.
Okay, I, but, um, okay, we'll get there. All right, consider taking any necessary, uh, we got that, and then review the minutes from the meeting, and that's in your packet. Review the minutes of the last meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Second. Motion made and seconded that, uh, we accept the minutes as written. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion made, seconded, and carries. Receive the monthly code enforcement report. Mr. Blanchard.
Okay, so for the month of February, we had a few cases this time around. A lot of trash and debris cases have happened in the month of February at a total of nineteen for the year. Nine high grass and then eight others. The others, we had, um, a property on Wilcox that has a hole in the roof, so we've asked them to repair it. And then right next door, there's a mobile home that has lost all of its siding. That's against the property maintenance code, so we've asked them to repair that as well. So that falls in your other category instead of just line item that out. And then the breakdowns of twenty-three cases have been resolved. One remains in court, and then twelve are still open due to the time constraints that they're allowed before going to the municipal court. And then we've kept a running tally that you've asked for since we've started proactive code enforcement. So far, we've completed one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven cases. Ten are still in court, and then the twelve are open due to the time they're allowed. With that, I'll field any close questions you may have.
I asked, probably asked you this in private, and I'm gonna ask you out in public. Converting a car wash to a mechanic's garage, is that, is that?
So there's an occupancy that, that, that would fall in, so it's not allowed. And so they're actually one of the others on that list. They've received violations. Yeah, that's a, that's a building code issue, because when you change your occupancy, there is a new certificate occupancy that's required, and so in doing so, you're required to come to the current code that the city has adopted, which is the two thousand and eighteen international codes and two thousand and seventeen national electrical code. They have not done that. They've not received a certificate occupancy, so they cannot legally operate within the city of Rockdale.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
How do you go about it? How do you go about?
You reported, you reported to Ben, and he's on it.
Yeah, so the way all code enforcement works is when someone breaks an ordinance, there can be daily citations that are written. That would be two thousand dollars a day to the judge's discretion. That's what he can go to. And I've actually been in a code class, and I believe they've changed that to four thousand dollars a day, but I have to verify that. But that would be the judge's, judge's discretion, and then if they plead guilty, they'll owe that money and have to resolve that issue. If they plead not guilty, then it will go to a trial by their choice.
But it ultimately is up to the judge. Whatever he determines, that's the maximum that he can find him.
But you're already on this, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're one of your others already, so it's an open case. It hasn't been twenty days yet, so they have not seen the judge, but they ha- they will be soon. Their time is running out.
Any further questions? Moving on to action item six, receiving, uh, the Development Services Department report. Next tab.
So for the month of February, we have issued a total of ten building permits, one demolition, five electrical, one HVAC, and seven plumbing permits. In those permits, there have been four new homes that have been approved, which is gonna bring about four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to your community. And then an additional ninety-eight thousand is invested in smaller projects like remodels, new roofs, things of that nature. And then we held one pre-con meeting with Republic Ridge this month. With that, I'll field any questions you have for Development Services.
Is that the one on Wilcox, or is that the one?
Texas Street. Texas and Belton is one piece, and then a little bit north on Texas is the other.
I spoke with the guys on, uh, the Wilcox project, and they're, they're moving forward with that project, so we should see some action here in a month. Didn't they say in about a month? That's the one where they're gonna, uh, print the homes, concrete print homes. Um, one question regarding the Autozone and the drainage ditch that goes down beside it. Are they gonna fill it in and level it out, or what's going on? 'Cause they've narrowed it down some. Just wondering what's going on with the drainage ditch.
I'd have to look at their plans to see what they're calling for drainage. I mean, as all developments, they're required to maintain what they currently have and cannot ex- increase the flow rate or the flow amount off of the property. And so they've gone through the review. They've gotten approval for our, however they were gonna handle that drainage. I just can't tell you that answer off the top of my head on how they've decided to handle that.
I couldn't remember what the plan showed, if they were concreting that, or if they were just, but anytime you move dirt, things look different. That, that's what caught my attention, but, yeah. Okay, any questions regarding his report, Development Services report? No questions. Number seven, consider and take any necessary action on appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, for term expiring one twenty-four. What were we supposed to do there? We've taken down a list of names to contact. I have put it on the radio as of last Friday and the newspaper, uh, this week, uh, that we're looking for civic-minded, uh, citizens, and, um, we need to get a pool built up. So if you know anybody, contact them. Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, it's on the agenda 'cause we had int- anticipated getting an application, which we did not do, um, for y'all to interview. So when we do get names, we will submit them again to you, and this will be on the agenda again.
I hope you get lots of names, sir. Oh, man. Number eight, consider and take any necessary action on determining meeting dates and times, uh, from the period March two thousand and twenty-five to February two thousand and twenty-six. And I have never included the staff in this conversation before. Is this a good time for staff? Would y'all rather do it after hours, like five-thirty?
I appreciate you guys doing it during the day. I, as city manager, I have a number of evening meetings throughout the month, and it's kinda nice to be able to go home to my wife once in a while. Um, but, so it is entirely up to you, and we'll accommodate whatever schedule you guys put together.
All right, and I'll open the floor for discussion.
Way better during the day for me. I have, I have evening events always.
I work every evening, so way better during the day for me.
Well, I'm, yeah, either way works for me. I mean, nicely retired. I, I can fit any, any meeting time in. I guess, you know, part of the problem with having and recruiting people seems to be the meeting time. So the other side, I mean, that's the other side to it is, is that it, it sounds like we're, we're losing some potential people because, you know, for a lot of folks, you know, they can't get away at this time, you know, if they're running, you know, regular nine to five jobs.
I, I will, for the record, say that in, in the five cities that I have, I've worked in, two of them have had meetings during the day, three of them have had meetings during the night, and, um, the planning commission generally does not draw that much, and so your attendance having it during the day is no different than, um, the attendance in the evening now. And I was also saying that if you do have issues that, you know, do have potential for, um, that, that the public does express a desire um, to speak, that there's no reason why you couldn't schedule your meeting in the evening for that particular event.
I think we've done that before.
Yeah, uh, so basically, everybody that was on the board at the time, we changed the time to the time 'cause it was best for everybody that was on the board, so we do accommodate to whoever approached or tried to get on the planning zone.
I'm kinda in the same situation as Charles. I have a lot of stuff, and, and yourself. Um, just got almost something every night, so during the day is a little bit easier.
I actually took off Tuesdays specifically for this.
Well, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion about our meeting date and time.
I make a motion, we maintain the afternoon meeting time on Tuesdays. However, that we will adapt if necessary, if there's a group of people that would like to meet with us for whatever purpose. Does that sound right?
Motion made and seconded, keep it the same. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And one abstention. All right. Number nine, consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to the City Council regarding a final plat submitted by Philip Bargas for property located in the six hundred block of Texas Street, also known as property ID one five one nine zero Rockdale, Midland County, Texas into two blocks and twenty-two lots. Yes.
So this is the final plat for the southern portion of our preliminary plat you have saw maybe a couple months ago now. Minor comments from staff is there is a signature block that is essentially from the preliminary plat that yourself and the mayor sign that says this is ready to move forward with the final plat. That's not needed on this plat 'cause this is the final plat. Then we've asked them to dedicate an easement. There is a twelve-inch water line that runs through that property. The developer's aware of it. And then the final is the date on the signature block says two thousand and twenty-four, and we've asked it to be two thousand and twenty-five 'cause that's when we will be signing. Other than that, this is the southern portion. You'll see another plat right after this that is also part of Phase one A. The reason they're two different plats is because the property's not contiguous, but it is the same phase.
How big are those lots?
These lots that they're doing out there are forties and fifties. Thirties and forties, thirties and forties. So these are the smaller lots, 'cause this is where the idea, and I don't know if there's still their idea, was gonna be the townhomes.
That's, this is, that's kinda where I was going. This is a townhome phase, right?
It's potentially townhome phase.
Yeah.
Plating them as individual lots.
Okay.
And so the next lot you'll see will be a portion of the, the bigger chunk of property, and those will be the, the slightly larger lots that your,
So these will.
Your single family will be at.
We're okaying the lots, but we don't know what's going on it?
Well, they already have the zoning that allows them to either go the townhome or site-built, so that's already been approved. So this plat reflects that zoning, and there are no differences with it.
Okay.
Is there any changes from the preliminary to this?
There is small changes. There's two lots that they lost that have gone to the common area.
That being the green stripe?
So they've gone from twenty-four was on the preliminary, twenty-two is on the final. And so if you look here, they've lost this lot and this lot. So it's all part of this drainage component, we call it. So not enough changes to have to come back with a preliminary plat. There is a certain percentage that if there was enough difference, they had to resubmit the preliminary. This didn't hit that threshold.
Questions for Ben?
I'm gonna make sure I can ask this. What, what were the, uh, price points on, on these homes?
So the builder.
Can I ask that?
Yeah, yeah, but he needs to go to the podium to catch it, microphone.
So the builder, who is not me, came here and said that they were gonna be around two hundred.
Any other questions?
No, sorry, you had to get up for that.
Easy enough.
Yeah, so staff hasn't received the building plans yet, so it's all still in a preliminary discussion as far as what the builder will be doing. But there's standards set out in that PUD that was already approved by the Planning Commission and Council of what you can expect.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this plat.
It's final plat?
Final plat, yes, with the appropriate changes.
So we have a motion to accept this final plat with, uh, notation, I guess? Was there a notation?
There, there were several signature block corrections and then dedicating an easement.
Gonna accept this final plat with notations. It's been seconded. All those in favor, right hand. Motion made, seconded, and carries. Action item ten, consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to City Council regarding a final plat submitted by Philip Bargas for property located in the seven hundred block of Texas Street, also known as property ID two zero zero seven seven Rockdale, Midland County, Texas into three blocks and thirty-one lots. This is the upper portion of this same location.
Same location, just the northern portion of Phase one A. It's thirty-one lots in this. There were no differences on how their lots were laid out from their preliminary plat. And as far as staff comments, it's gonna be the same. They need to remove the signature block for the mayor and planning chair to recommend final plat, and then correct the year. There is no easement dedicated for this one because there's not a water line that we have running through that property that we're aware of.
Questions?
How many phases are there total?
Two.
Two.
So you'll see one more final plat for the rest of this property.
Okay.
I recommend approval of the final plat for Republic Ridge face, subject to the following conditions.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve this final plat with notations. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, carries, motion carries. Consider take any necessary action on a recommendation to the City Council regarding a final plat submitted by Ranch Road Development for property located in the eleven hundred block of North FM four eighty-seven Rockdale, Midland County, Texas into three lots, huh, three blocks and eighty-one lots.
So this is Phase one F of Cornerstone, so you just recently saw one D and one E. They've went ahead and gone with one F as well, and so that has been reviewed by the engineers, and we've sent those comments back. As far as from a plating standpoint, it's the same. They have on the code official signature block that they're inside the ETJ. We just asked them to correct that, that they're inside the city limits. But as far as how the plating is gonna go, again, this is the final plat, so once they install all the necessary infrastructure, the city will review it, accept it into their inventory, and then this plat will be recorded. There are no changes from the preliminary plat. This is consistent.
Let me understand, this is the second phase of Cornerstone? Let me understand, this is the second phase of Cornerstone out there?
So this is one F, so this is actually gonna be their sixth, so they've gone, they're building out one A right now, if you go out on site. One B and one C have already been installed and accepted, they've now submitted for one D, one E, and one F. And all of those are on the plating phase, they're gonna start putting in the road and infrastructure soon.
Is that, is it city limits or ETJ?
City limits.
Okay.
Yeah, when they, when they put in their request, it included the boundary of the whole project, right?
Well, so the city annexed that property while ourselves and the MDD still owned it. We, they essentially annexed the right-of-way of Texas Street, and then the property was contiguous with city limits, and they annexed that property as well. They then sold it to Ranch Road, and Ranch Road is now developing.
The city limit stops right past Cornerstone, Ranch Road?
Yeah.
Will they move the sign, or how long, or what, how does that go about?
That's gonna be TexDOT's decision if they'll move that sign or not, 'cause there are several signs, the sign's not necessarily indicated that you've entered the city limits, 'cause there are several signs that are not accurate with where the city limit line is.
And, and this, the highway or, is actually a boundary of the city limits, if you're on one side, you're in the city limits, if you're on the other side, you're out of the city limits, right? City limits picks up back down close to the, uh, two and a half. Yeah, somewhere's in there on, uh...
On the other side, Neil Raymond's place isn't in the city.
No, it's out, it's, where that church and the, and the county barn and all that's at in there somewheres.
Yeah, the, this property is, uh, if you look at it on the city limit map, you'll, your city limits, and then you see a big, almost like an antenna on a car, it sticks out, and then it goes back to the city limits.
Anyway, we, we've got a, a proposal here.
Before, I, I have a... We have a different...
It's, it's out of order, it's, it's gonna be your next page.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna give you a minute to review. You had time?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on, uh, action item eleven.
I make a motion, we accept action item number eleven as presented, converting, um, eleven hundred block of North FM forty-seven into three blocks, eighty-one lots.
Motion made. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
It's out of order.
Uh, carries unanimously. Okay, number twelve, consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a preliminary plat submitted by Winston Parks for property located at six-one-eight US Highway seventy-nine, Rockdale, Mylum County, Texas, into three lots.
So this is the first time this property's being plotted, and so that's, you will see that it's only gonna be lot one, two, and three for that purpose. You will also see that, I didn't attach it to you guys, we do a, a review on the ordinance, because what staff has to do is make sure that there's a complete submittal, or we cannot accept their application. This was a complete submittal, but there were several comments that we had that need to be removed, so I will go through them slowly, if you have questions, just interrupt me. On the first, the way they've drawn their building setbacks is you can see on the dash lines, it's almost as they've drawn it as it's one lot. But each lot's gonna have its own bu, different building setbacks, and so we've asked them to amend that appropriately. The second is on that ordinance that I referred to, that the city has adopted for when somebody submits a preliminary plat, you're required to add every owner that's within three hundred feet of you on your plat. So you'll see that they've started to add some owners, but they haven't added all of them, so we've just asked them to put that on the plat. They can remove the bonded abstractor signature block, that's not a requirement. Then there is a signature block that's titled Certificate of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've asked them to change the title from Planning Director to the Chair of Planning Commission, so Doug can sign for that. On the acceptance of dedication by city council signature block, I've asked them to remove the adopted-by-mayor portion, and then amend the city clerk to city secretary. And then the final is they can remove the county treasurer certificate block, so a lot of certificate block items.
Are you here for this? You're, okay.
Just sitting in, thank you.
You just came in to check it out?
We like windy days, if people drift in, yeah, okay.
So just a lot, it's a lot of comments, but most of it's just signature block actions, it's real clerical stuff. The only item that has a lot of substance is gonna be the building setbacks, and then adding that ownership within the three hundred feet.
And did they use a survey company, or how did, did they use existing drawings, or how did we get to where we're at with the, uh, drawing that's presented to us?
So they hire a surveyor. A surveyor is the only legal person that can create a plat, and so they always will have to hire a surveyor. This is one that I don't believe you've seen before, and so I've worked with them on city requirements. And so this is their first official submittal, so they've, they probably added signature blocks that other cities require them to add, we just don't necessarily require them.
Well, I'm still not sure I un, get all the size, but it, when you take lot two and put the setbacks on, on the right side, is, is that lot wide enough to have, to be useful, I mean, that looks pretty narrow to me from the drawing.
Their lot is eighty-three foot is what they're proposing, which would meet city code.
Okay, so even with a setback, they're still...
Yeah, it just looks narrow compared to the others, but it, it does meet city code on that.
Is there a, on lot three, is there a proposed, which would be the front of the, of the structure, or is that not...
That's not something you typically call out on a plat, really the way you'll call that out on a plat is, Tim's question was the, how you determine the front of a property. It's usually by your building setbacks, because your front's building setback is typically gonna be different than your side building setback. So when you dedicate that twenty-five-foot front building setback along the highway, then you're a highway address, if you dedicate it on the side, that would be, uh, all day.
So they are proposing on this right here to have a twenty-five-foot setback, both on all-day and the highway?
Mm-hmm, they, they, but they've drawn their building setbacks wrong, so we'll have, that's part of the correction they'll have to make, and we'll see what they determine. From what the plans I've seen, both front lots will front off of Cameron, and then the rear lot will front on the side street.
And we have the general rule that where the front door is determines the front setbacks?
That's, yeah, that's typically correct.
So on this, on lot three, the side yard setback on all-day could be, how, how, what's the...
So for the, the street-side setback for commercial, I believe is fifteen.
Lot three is a veterinary clinic?
That's the existing veterinary clinic, yes.
Will they be removing that building?
They propose to keep it for now.
Okay.
But they have not officially submitted their building permit application plans to determine if they will actually end up keeping that or not, but in discussion, they've said they will.
Block one would have been the holding pin behind the veterinary clinic, and then, uh, lot two is beside the rock house there, I think, a little area in there. Questions for Ben regarding this? Are you comfortable?
We're comfortable with the changes, that, just minor changes, signature blocks, building setbacks, and then finishing out the ownership information. And then this will be, this is a preliminary plat, so you will see this again, once they get their submittals approved by the engineer, and then they'll come back in for final plat, and then start installing that necessary infrastructure for how they're gonna handle their drainage.
Timeline on that, they have...
They wanna turn this around quickly, when I last spoke to them, they wanna submit this, they've already submitted their plans, so once they get approval from the engineers, you'll see a final plat pretty soon. But is, is the plan from a month ago.
I make a motion that we approve this with the recommendations made by the city, or Ben?
Staff.
Staff.
Motion made. Motion made and seconded that we approve it. Notation from Ben. Or staff, excuse me, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion made, seconded and carries. Included all my notes, so according to the official clock, it's two oh seven PM, and we're gonna go ahead and adjourn, adjourn the meeting. Today's meeting.